I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Corleville City Council to order, please, on October 26, 2021. Roll call.
Foster.
Present.
Gross.
Here.
Dodd's.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
Winn.
Here.
Okay, all council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, city administrator, city attorney, and several staff members in the audience. I would entertain a motion at this time to approve the agenda. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Gross and seconded by Goodrich. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Item four is citizen comments. And since I know everyone in the audience except perhaps the name of the photographer, unless he would like to talk to us tonight, I don't think we have any citizen comments. So we will move on to item five, the Fifth Avenue Storm Sewer Project. This is for constructing stormwater improvements on Fifth Avenue North of Seventh Street to address longstanding drainage problems in the backyards of 711, 713, and 715, Fifteenth Avenue, Fifth Avenue, I'm sorry, and for storm sewer needed for the redevelopment of city-owned properties along Fourth Avenue Place. So item A is a public hearing on the plan specifications and estimate of cost and form of contract for this project. So I'll open the public hearing. Are there any comments in the audience? Probably not. Any written comments?
No.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing and consider the resolution approving those documents.
Resolution approving the plan specifications estimate of cost and form of contract ordering bids, setting a date for the receiving of bids, and directing posting of the bid letting all for the Fifth Street Storm Sewer Project introduced for adoption by council member Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Very, very close, but seconded by Winn. Any discussion or comments? I'll just mention that the public hearing, or the bids, I'm sorry, are due November 2nd. Roll call.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Okay, resolution passes all ayes. Excuse me. Item six is a housing code amendment. This is the third and final consideration of an ordinance that brings our housing code into conformance with various state regulatory changes and makes some other updates that have been needed over the years. So I consider the ordinance done.
Ordinance number 2021-1012, an ordinance amending Chapter 145 of the City of Corleville regarding the housing code introduced for adoption, third and final consideration by council member Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Second by Goodrich. Any discussion? Roll call.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Resolution is, or excuse me, the ordinance passes its third and final reading, all ayes. The resolution, item B, for the schedule of permit and fees.
Resolution approving an additional schedule of permit and fees to be collected by the City of Corleville for the Community Development Department, introduced for adoption by council member Winn, seconded by.
Second.
Second by Dodd's. Discussion? Roll call.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Moving on to item number seven, Coral Six Square Edition. This is for an 18-acre parcel adjacent to Highway 6 and west of Jones Boulevard and plats a right-of-way alignment and future improvements for a Coral Six Square Drive, which will provide a second access to Western Hill Mobile Home Park. This will allow the expansion of that mobile home park. And Dave Johnson, our community development director, is here to give us a departmental report and PNC report.
Thank you, Mayor. Much of what you said, I would have explained. I would only add to that by noting there's two outlots identified in the plat that will be for future development. And the city staff has reviewed the proposed preliminary plat and finds that it conforms with the requirements for preparation and filing outlined in city code. That's all I have.
And the PNC report, please.
The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request at their October 6, 2021 meeting, and by vote of six to zero, the commission recommended approval of the Coral Six Square Edition preliminary plat.
Perfect. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Then item C is I consider a resolution approving the preliminary plat for this project.
Resolution approving the preliminary plat for Coral Six Square Edition, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by council member Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Second by Winn. Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Resolution's approved, all ayes. And I'll just mention what is frequently mentioned in other meetings like this. If it seems like we're not discussing these items, it's only because we've discussed them in work session and reached a consensus and that's why we aren't having a great deal of discussion amongst the council. Item eight is Summit Hills. This is a resolution that accepts the public improvements for Summit Hills and releases the subdivision from the liens for those public improvements, excluding an escrow for erosion control, storm water intake repairs, and the sidewalks pursuant to the subdividers agreement.
Resolution accepting public improvements constructed on Summit Hills, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by.
Second. Second by Gross. Discussion? Roll call.
Winn.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution's approved, all ayes. Item nine is lease amendments. This is an amendment that revises sales periods used to calculate the gross rent to be paid to the city, which is currently 8% of sales for the J. Gill business in the Iowa River Landing.
Resolution approving a second amendment to that certain lease agreement with Jill Acquisition LLC, introduced for adoption by council member Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Second by Goodrich. Discussion? Roll call.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Resolution's approved, all ayes. Item 10 is the Dovetail Recreation Area, Agudas Akim Shared Parking Lot Renovation Project. This is for the Dovetail Recreation Area, Agudas Akim Shared Parking Lot renovations that was recently completed. Basically, the synagogue and the city agreed to split the cost of the project. I'd entertain a motion to approve payment of invoice number 25139 for $8,396.48 and invoice number 26139 for $47,155.62 to L.L. Pelling for this project, parking lot renovation project. So a move by.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Foster, seconded by Gross. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that payment is approved, all ayes. And Don, resolution accepting the project.
Resolution accepting the Dovetail Recreation Area, Agudas Akim Shared Parking Lot Renovation Project, as completed, introduced for adoption by council member Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Ooh, close. Seconded by Foster. Any discussion? Roll call.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Resolution's approved, all ayes. Item 11 is the Street Finance Report. This is a report that itemizes the allocation of funds used to construct, repair, and maintain our city streets.
Resolution approving the fiscal year 2021 Street Finance Report, introduced by council member Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution's approved, all ayes. Item 12 is the water connection fees. This is a resolution that acknowledges the city has received payment of $60,006.12 for the water connection fees for the Eagle Bend at Clear Creek Part One Development.
Resolution acknowledging payment in full of the Camp Cardinal Boulevard Water Connection Fee levied against Eagle Bend at Clear Creek Part One, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Questions or discussion? Roll call.
Winn.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Item 13, a Community Development Block Grant Program. Excuse me. This is a resolution setting a public hearing for November 9th for an application of CDBG funds for the Corleville Community Food Pantry Commercial Kitchen Equipment Project.
Resolution setting a public hearing on application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for the Community Development Block Grant Program, introduced for adoption by council member Foster, seconded by.
Second. Seconded by Gross. Discussion? Roll call.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Item 14, I'd consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented or amended.
Mayor, I would ask the council to please approve the consent calendar, A through Q inclusive.
Okay, moved by Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Foster. Any discussion? Roll call.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Consent calendar's approved as presented, all ayes. Item 15 is the City Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would just like to ask Scott Larson, our city engineer, to update you. We've got a lot of work on railroad crossings occurring. Some have been completed and the rest will be started this week, and just wanted to give everybody an update.
Yeah, thanks, Kelly. So we are actually halfway through now. We finished, excuse me, Iowa Interstate Railroad has finished two out of the four railroad crossings that are slated to be repaired yet this week. On Monday, they tackled the Easterly Leg of West Core Drive. It's out by Tyson's and Hawkeye Harley. And they started just before 7:00 a.m., and the asphalt work was finished just before 7:00 p.m., so right about 12 hours. But then we had to let the asphalt cool overnight, and we reopened the Easterly Leg this morning at 5:00 a.m. And then at just around 8:00 a.m. this morning, the crew arrived at the 25th Avenue Railroad Crossing and got started right away. And that job was a little bit simpler, didn't require the extensive repair like at West Core, and that work was completed at 2:00 p.m. And so we opened that a little bit ahead of schedule. Tomorrow at 7:00 a.m. is when they move over to the Camp Cardinal Boulevard Railroad Crossing, start this process again. It's almost identical to 25th Avenue. In fact, Camp Cardinal Boulevard's actually one lane narrower. So we're actually hoping that translates into an even quicker repair on Camp Cardinal Boulevard tomorrow. So hopefully by mid-afternoon, we'll be able to reopen that road connection. During that closure, 25th Avenue and Camp Cardinal Boulevard, or excuse me, Corridge Avenue will remain open and connected to James Street, and that's including James Street east of Camp Cardinal Boulevard where the post office is, and there's multiple businesses there. So they will all remain accessible. And then Thursday is the last big one. That's the Westerly Railroad Crossing on West Core Drive. So that's a little bit different than the one on Monday because we have somewhere between 16 and 18 different businesses on that Westerly Leg. So we've tried to keep everybody as updated as possible. I think, you know, everybody realizes there's limited options of what can be done there. And so just like with the work that was done on Monday with the Easterly West Core Drive, we're hoping for that same 12-hour window out there, get the asphalt placed, allow it to cure overnight so that we can reopen that leg sometime early in Friday morning, and hopefully get that open before most of those businesses would normally open on a Friday morning. So that's all for the railroad crossings.
Fortunately, the weather report doesn't look very promising, especially for Thursday.
Thursday is interesting, yes. And so I've asked those questions multiple times because it's been quite a coordination effort. And the indication I continue to receive is that unless there is a heavy lightning event or extremely heavy downpours, the lightning would affect both the railroad work and also the asphalt work. But the asphalt work can actually happen under a rain event. That's a little bit different than if we were having to do concrete. They said they'll keep working unless it's just a really extreme downpour. So fingers crossed. I think, you know, if we can't open at 5:00 a.m. Friday morning, maybe at 6:00, maybe at 7:00, we'll just be watching it closely and staying in touch with all the businesses as best we can, so they know what to expect. So getting close.
Thank you, Scott.
So we do thank all of those businesses on both ends of West Core, especially because, you know, it is an inconvenience to them, but they have, the city engineering department has been working with them and gave them plenty of notice, and so they are all trying to make alternative plans for their individual businesses. We've talked a couple of times over the last couple of months about the Dovetail Recreation Area. Judy Joyce and her staff from 7G will be out there over the next couple of weeks doing that work, and then they'll write up a report on that, what they've observed from that. A couple of events that are coming up, Halloween is this Sunday from 5:30 to 8:00. So watch out for all of the youth around the community. And then the Community Shred Event is from 8:00 to noon this Saturday in Aquatics Pool Parking Lot. So just to remind people that's available, and just congratulate the Iowa Heartlanders on winning their first game at the Extreme Arena. So that's it, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Kelly. So Judy Joyce's report would be finished, say, by the end of the year? Would that be approximately the end of the year? Thank you. Speaking, I'll just tag on your last comment about the Heartlanders. Yes, it was a great night on Friday night, and every, our, the ownership of the team, that was the first time they'd left Canada in over a year, and was more than impressed of our facility that they're playing in. So it was a great time, and they won. But there's another home game tomorrow night, 7:00, against the Wheeling. Wheeling.
Wheeling, West Virginia?
Yeah, Wheeling, West Virginia, but they have a team name. I was gonna say Lugnuts, but I think that's somebody else. So, but anyways, the Wheeling, West Virginia team. And then this coming Friday and Sunday, we're playing Toledo. So, and Toledo's the best, considered the best league, best team in the ECHL League. So we'll have some challenges in front of us.
It's the Wheeling Nailers.
Nailers. Thank you, thank you.
Lugnuts.
Lugnuts is some, that must be Detroit or somebody like that, you know, who knows? But give me a little time to get used to these teams. Also, the University of Iowa hockey team is playing Iowa State University in the arena this Saturday, beginning at 1:00. So there'd be some collegiate hockey there as well. I wanted to be sure to announce the upcoming vacancies for our boards and commissions. It's that time of year where in the fall, we advertise and give folks plenty of time to either consider reapplying if they're currently on a board or commission, or throwing their resume into the hat and for consideration of appointment. I'll just quickly read through these. All of these applications have a deadline of Wednesday, November 24th. So approximately a year or a month from now, these will be due by 5:00 on November 24th. Two five-year appointments to the Board of Adjustment, three, well, excuse me, two three-year appointments to the Corleville Arts Commission, and one to fill a partial term that ends next December. So about a one-year partial term. So two, two full terms of three years and one partial term of approximately one year on the Arts Commission. On the Corleville Civil Service Commission, that's a four-year term. There's one position open. Parks and Recreation Commission, three-year term, two positions. And Planning and Zoning Commission, which is a five-year term, there are two positions. So there's a lot of openings this fall for our boards and commissions. Again, there's more information on the city website at corleville.org, including you can download an application form. And if you're interested, get those in, but close the business on November 24th. And the only other thing I want to do is, which we do too often, is pay regrets to outstanding community members that have passed. And this past week, tragically, Steve Coley was killed in a traffic crash involving, I believe it's his brother. But yeah, I think many of us know Steve Coley. He's been a businessman in this area that we've worked with on various city projects, and just, I don't know anybody that didn't know him, thought he was a really super guy, really nice guy, very hot guy, person of high integrity. So our condolences certainly go out to all of his family. Very sad. So with that, I will have the city attorney's report.
Well, as you can see, Kevin is not well, but I want you to know I've kept my insurance up on him, so we should be okay. Nothing more, thank you.
Okay, yeah, just don't get whatever he has, I guess. Committee and council members report. Oh, I don't know. We'll just start down at Lori and work our way this way for tonight.
Thank you. My thoughts and prayers go out to Steve Coley's family, also his wife, Michael, and daughter Ashland and their family, and they have a business here in Corleville also. We had a nice work day earlier last week, and just want to thank the city for all the workers who put everything together so that it's very easy to join in and be a part of planting trees and cleaning up Corleville. Thank you.
Okay.
Chill.
Thank you, Mayor. This last week, the mayor spoke, and the entire council was in attendance as we dedicated a new trail and bridge at the Clear Creek. And we are honoring Daniel Holderness, our retired city engineer, and naming it the Daniel R. Holderness Trail Bridge. So we had a fantastic turnout for it, and we tied the two sides together with Iowa City, and it was a great event. I'm wearing my childcare worker shirt because today immunizations for COVID for children 5 to 11 got approved by Pfizer. So please consider immunizing your kids, too, so they're safe. Boosters are available. I know Walgreens has the Moderna. My physician's office had Pfizer, so just check around whichever kind that you want to get. And I hope that Kevin feels better and gets back here soon. That's it.
Thank you, Jill.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor. I don't have much to report today. Just that the Corleville Center for the Performing Art is in full swing, so please check them out. They have a lot of great show coming up, so go buy some tickets and watch some show. And that is all for my report, although I have questions, though, Mayor. May I ask them?
Sure.
For the Freightliner truck that we are going to get, and well, that we are going to sell, is it a 2009 or 2010? Because we said a 2010, but in the Kelowna letter to us, they listed it as a 2009.
I will have to check because I have, I saw it as a 2009, but I'll check on it.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Good catch. Mitch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few things, a lot have been said. I also wanted to just congratulate Dan Holderness on the bridge being named for him. I can't think of a more aptly great tribute for him than that. I also wanted to pass my sympathies to the Coley family, too. I live on Ashland Court, which was named after, was developed by Steve and is named after his daughter, so a horrible, horrible tragedy. I also wanted to just comment, I don't want to steal any thunder from you, Megan, if you're gonna say something, but I might ask you to say something because there was an interesting Attorney General's report released today that Iowa's on pace to break the record for domestic violence deaths in the last 15 years. And, and it's not even close. So just, you know, I know that it's Domestic Violence Prevention Month, and Megan gave a really nice and eloquent presentation on that a few weeks ago to start off our council meeting, or to end our council meeting. But I just think it's, I was just struck by that story today when I was thumbing through things. So, and I'm sure you have the number memorized, but maybe in your comments, if you'll give it when you, when you, when it's your spot. Sorry, I don't want to steal your stuff. And then lastly, good news, bad news. I guess it's good news. I tried to get to the reception for the Heartlanders. We had a home football game. Unfortunately, at least the Heartlanders won. West Side was not as fortunate. But the traffic was, I mean, was the crowd big? Because it was, it was thick. I mean, okay, that's good. It's awesome. I'll try to get there.
Over 4,000 people, so.
Okay. But they're coming for the Zamboni driver.
Well, that's not me for a while, so.
Okay, all right, all right.
But I'm coming.
All right, so ahead, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Megan.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just wanted to echo the congratulations to Dan Holderness, wonderful event last week. One of the things that really struck me as we were having our event dedicating the trail and the bridge is the number of people that were using that stretch of trail for, it was, it was right at about 5:00 when we had the event, and there were so many people coming home on their bikes. And it was just fantastic to see that, that trail getting that usage. And I think it's a great example of the type of amenities that we offer in our community that are really special and really unique. So that was, that was wonderful to see. Also, had a great time at the Heartlanders game on, on Friday night, although I have to admit that the mom in me had, was, every time they would get into a fight, I wanted to, I was like, hey, now, stop. Break it up. I think it's just, you know, having five kids, it kind of put me in that mindset. But it was, it was a great, great game, and I'm really excited to have the team here in our community. And just a big thank you to everyone who helped make that, or brought that into fruition. And then finally, yes, Mitch, to your point, we have gotten those stats. I don't have them memorized, unfortunately, but I can tell you that just what we are seeing locally at DVIP is that the need has greatly increased. The lethality has increased. And we have talked a lot at our agency about how domestic violence is the pandemic within the pandemic. So we, we do, we are seeing that. And as we, that's important to note that as we, we close out Domestic Violence Awareness Month, that, you know, it is, it is a hidden, hidden problem in, in our community. I also, to kind of a good news, bad news thing as well, wanted to talk about our, we had our largest in-kind donation drive of the year on Saturday, our Shop for Shelter event, where we partnered with several local grocery stores in Iowa City, Corleville, and North Liberty. And we managed to raise over $5,000 in cash and gift cards and $42,000 worth of goods. The two Corleville stores, I was the store lead at the Corleville on Cross Park, the two, but the two Corleville stores, I just wanted to note, were two of the highest performing stores out of all of the grocery stores that we worked with. And the Lantern Park Hy-Vee was wonderful. They helped us run copies of our lists when we ran out of lists. So that was, it was really, those are really great partnerships and really great to see that support in, in our community. I wanted to also give a special shout out to the Moms Demand Action Group. We honored them with the proclamation. They helped us out. And I wanted to give a special shout out to Sheriff Brad Kunkel, who was a volunteer at the, the Cross Park Hy-Vee. Sheriff Brad is also going to be the recipient of the Pat Meyer Vision Award. He will receive that this Thursday at the Iowa City Public Library at noon. And I wanted to note that our Lieutenant Deb Summers also won that award. What year, does anybody remember what year she won that?
Three or four years ago, maybe?
Yeah. It was, yeah, maybe three years ago. But that's, that's an award that goes to community members who are, are recognized for their excellence in, in their work to, to, their work into preventing domestic violence. So congratulations to. So congratulations to Sheriff Kunkel, and I'm looking forward to seeing him receive his award. And happy Halloween, everyone. I love Halloween. I hope everybody stays safe and has a great time on Sunday night, and that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Okay. That was Lori, right? And seconded by Mitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.